All right, call this meeting to order. This meeting and all other meetings is council open to the public, proper notice of posting given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. So citizenry may be aware of the time and place and agenda of this meeting. Roll call.
Shaney Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Gage?
Here.
Nick Gunnerson?
Here.
Rich Lakey?
Here.
We are missing Mike Kuntz and Keith McDowsley tonight.
Okay. Make an entertainment. Well, pledge of allegiance led by Bruce Gage, please join us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to move the police chief's report up to after or before the introduction and offer the new police officer.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to amend the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved or opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we have a chief's report.
No. Need to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Prove the minutes of the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 18th, 2016 meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 18th. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, Chief Poltraw.
Just a couple of things for you. Probably all three of these items you've, whatever, in some capacity or another, but on July 23rd, Officer Beck took a call on the east side of town where a woman was, eventually was charged with extortion, being extorted by her son. In and during that arrest, we took the substantial amount of marijuana. Charge of extortion was charged, out also legally possessing controlled substances, illegally possessing prescription drugs, possession of THC, and possession of THC with intent to deliver. Because if that wasn't enough for a week, we all were impacted by the truck versus truck car accident at 110 in double A. That accident has exceeded $1 million in property damage. And I think pretty much probably impacted everybody in Rome in some capacity or another through Friday. But I would give Canadian National Credit for that. They did have people there pretty much around the clock to get the work done, so they did the best they could. And then, of course, we had an accident in front of me at the park. That investigation was concluded, and it's just that, it was an accidental, really. It was a terrible situation. And this, I have for the police report.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to do the introduction?
Sure. As most of you know, Corporal Woby left us to find by brighter pastures, and we did a hiring process to replace him. Applications were taken, interviews were done, and at the end of the day, we had a candidate that came out on top, clearly on top. Justin Malique comes to us from the rural Carolinian area of Chalmers County. He's a graduate of the Titan High School and received his associate degree in criminal justice from the Northeast of Wisconsin Technical College. He then furthered his education by obtaining his EMR slash firefighting certificate. Justin began his career here in Wyoming as a part-time officer in October of 2015. Over the fall and winter, Justin assisted the department on several high-level drug investigations and other major crimes. He was given the lead on a major case this spring, and through hard work and very long hours, several suspects are being brought to justice and spent considerable amounts of time in prison for their actions. Further, if you've met Justin, he wears his emotions on his sleeve. He's a caring, compassionate, and easy to get along with. His pleasant personality and ability to get along with people that he protects will assure that the department's continuing community oriented policing model will be successful for many years to come. I'm proud to welcome Justin Malique as the deputy of Wyoming as a full-time police officer for the Wyoming Police Department. Congratulations.
One, he needs not to.
Has everybody had the opportunity to meet Justin? I'm sure.
Somebody got to swear him in?
Welcome aboard. He's already sworn.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
One time, be able.
I hope so.
While we're on the subject of the police department, I just got a comment to make. This past week, we had a tragedy up at the park in the swimming pool area, and our officers get called up to our emergency personnel. But I just publicly want to commend Officer Brandon Leskey. Sergeant did a very good job. The city can be very proud of the way he handled yourself, very professionally, took care of things, kept it under control. I just want the public to realize that we've got outstanding officers installed, and you're one of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Good job. That's what I'm trying to say. Frank, you got the floor.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. We'll take care of him.
Go ahead, Frank.
We see a little bit of bad news, in my opinion, from the Halls Corporation. We used to have one of the highest in the Hall circulation of the inner library homes where we loaned more than we came in with. They are, as of the end of this year, discontinuing that service, which means we're going to be owing them an additional $1,477, because that was the amount that we were able to get on that interchange program, because we did a good job here of what we loaned out. So our librarian is writing a lengthy letter explaining her situation and what that's going to do to affect us. Whether that will happen or not, we don't know, because there are, from what I gather, other libraries that are also going to be writing a letter, because that is going to impact on budget. You know, question about that, because it's that much more than we would end up owing. And I'm not saying that to scare you because of our budget or anything, but it was just something that we found out today. According to our librarian, she went to a meeting on Friday, and they said, well, this has been in the works for about three years, and yet no library knew anything about that. So it's all of a sudden being hit upon, and yeah, you have a budget coming up next year figure on pay next report, so. I'm sorry to hear that, and so are all of us, as we were sitting there today. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that's basically the only news that we have right now.
Frank, I have one question. What happened to the bricks on one of those seating benches out front of the library?
They are deteriorating, and the only reason why we have not addressed that, if you remember, at about three or four meetings ago, I said that we're going to be contacting a contractor to give us some plans for the library expansion. But because that library circulation, the whole business, was about 10 years old, we're asking the Halls to redo that, see what our needs are. We're also looking at, because libraries are now starting to have sewing classes and cooking classes and what have you, other libraries, we're looking at, do we go that way? Do we even think about that, because that's going to impact on what we're doing there? So to answer your question, why we're not touching the brick, we've had an estimate on it, but if we expand, we're going to be expanding out, taking in part of the sidewalk area and possibly taking down the City Crystal Street right now, because that's the area that was recommended for the expansion. We can't go back, because if we go back, we have to relocate our circulation desk, we have to redo the inside, the entire inside of the library, which would be really costly. So we're looking at what's feasible, so we've put the bricks on hold, but if we do not plan on doing any expansion in the next few years, or for five years, then we definitely will be working at the brick face. But by the way, I had a guy in, he gave me an estimate, it was only $8,000. Yeah, who is right. I thought, jeez, a couple of bricks and some touch point, that sounded awfully expensive, but we didn't go any further because of that expansion possibility. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Frank.
Thank you.
We'll go up to committee report, Public Works. Bruce?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval, A15, pay request number 14, for minor construction for $203,966 and one cent contingent on the receipt of the lien waiver.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Quick comment, those lien waivers, obviously that contingency is important. This is pay request number 14, and we just released number 11, so that gives you an idea of what delay is. We're almost three months behind, but it's...
It's not our fault. It's that.
Right. We're following the contract and releasing when we get the proof that they paid their stuff, so.
Okay, any questions? Take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead, Bruce.
Make a motion to recommend approval of Fols Brothers snow removal rates for the next two winters.
I'll second it.
Any question on that one? That's pretty straightforward. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Finance, we'll go all the way down to Shaney.
I would like to make a motion to approve of change order number seven, immol for credit of $3,902.79.
I'll second it.
You want to explain that credit, please?
Yeah, in your packet, there's kind of a quick rundown, but the net impact is a credit, because we are crediting back the, it's a little over $11,000 in gas and electric that we paid on the billing, because the bill stayed in our name. Because it was in our name, there was some savings upfront on new meters, temporary services, so we paid the bills the whole way, and rather than billing immol to have them pay us them, we're taking a credit on the, it's just one of those thousand, but then in your packet, and I could zoom down, I'll probably lose my spot here, I just got a rundown on some door hardware. Elevator shaft, the elevator inspector from the state said that we needed to provide exhaust in that shaft. The other piece that's in there is a security system for the elevator, which is going to be a combination code that locks out the basement from general public, so we can have our storage, some evidence, technology, things like that. There's a rundown on some items, there should be one more change order that's coming, and a lot of it's stuff from the very beginning that's just been sitting out there.
Any questions? Take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Vote next one.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 585, amending the 2015 budget.
I'll second it.
Any questions on that? Go through that. That's a roll call vote. Roll call, go ahead.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Lakey?
Aye.
Motion carried with all ayes.
Number three, go ahead.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve of resolution number 586, reducing tax equivalent payable to the city of Wyoming from the Wyoming Water Utility 2016.
I'll second it.
Any questions on that one? Roll call.
Yep, this is just a standard thing that we do every year. The water utility does not pay a tax amount on the real estate of the water utility.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Lakey?
Aye.
Carried with all ayes.
Thank you. Next one.
I would like to make a motion to approve of checks number 32468 through number 3253, totaling the amount of $526,173.04.
I'll second it.
Questions? Roll call.
Gage?
Aye.
Lakey?
Aye.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Carried with all ayes.
Motion carried. Thanks, Shaney. Police of fire, Bruce, you want to take that one?
Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the sentry siren and wireless control system.
I'll second it.
I got a question on that. What is that, or what?
Yep, so we...
Get for a nine o'clock whistle?
Yeah, we talked about it, the police committee on the second. Back in April, to get the siren up in operation, Krieger Electric had put in a temporary solution, and all it is, is it's basically like a light switch. You can turn on fire alarm, or you can turn on the tornado siren. That amount for a temporary solution was going to get the siren up and running right away, and then on the back end, what we can do is buy the best solution that they've come up with, which is a radio-controlled solution to turn the siren on and off. Our Packer Cowie can turn it on, the fire station can turn it on, our officers can turn it on from their cars if they need to. It's going to end up being what same cost as if we would have put it in at the beginning, because now that we wait, we get out of the immol contract, and we save their markup. One thing that we were questioning or clarifying at the police committee is a price, and in working with Krieger Electric, the price for an approval would be not to exceed $2,400. But they had looked at, I want to say, seven different systems. We had Hartman look at some systems, and it looks like this one will be the best one. It just takes about a month to get it installed.
What is the cost?
Not to exceed $2,400, because Krieger's going to come and wire it in then, too.
Sounds perfect, what we need.
Yep, and it should be, yep.
Motion was made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public Health, Shaney, you're on the board again.
We had a meeting today, and we did go over and discuss the driveway ordinance, the turf protection, and the yardway site. We still need some more time to do some more research before we can bring anything to council, so right now, we have no action.
Thank you. Recreation Committee, Nick?
No action for council tonight.
Public Property, Rich?
No action for council.
Planning Commission, no action for council. We're doing good here. New business. Consider, we'll do all these licenses at one time, consider operators license for Sherry Fisher, Star Derry, Stacy Weed, Bobby Tim for the Cenex, Stephanie Cunningham, Corner Bar, Jarrett Knolls for JK's, and Sandra McNass. You got a motion to approve of?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve these licenses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consider temporary Class B license for Wyoming Chamber of Commerce for horse and buggy days with a fee waiver request. You get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, consider temporary Class B retained license for the Wyoming Chamber of Commerce for horse and buggy days, September 17th, with fee waiver request.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider a permit for Wyoming, wait a minute here.
Parade, parade permit.
Parade permit for Wyoming High School homecoming parade, October 7th, again with a fee request.
Horse and buggy days for the parade permit for horse and buggy days.
All right. Parade permit for horse and buggy days on September 17th.
Make a motion to consider the parade permit for horse and buggy days, September 17th fee waiver request.
I'll second. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Now we'll go parade permit for the high school for homecoming, October 7th, with the fee waiver request.
I'll make the motion for the Wyoming for my high school homecoming parade on October 7th with the fee waiver request.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, consider to extend liquor license premise area description for the corner bar into the back parking lot. Somebody explain that?
Yeah, just real quickly, this is to amend their liquor license to match up with what the corner bar had. There's some establishments in town that their premise will include outdoor that area. On this one, Becky, that's correct, but Jack's Corner Bar had this before. When these guys went for their liquor license, they did not include.
Okay.
They didn't match up the same premise.
So when they go outside the back door...
I actually have a question about that. It's about beer gardens. I believe that you have to have an enclosed beer garden with limited access. I'm trying to think back to when I went through the courses for a liquor license, and to have a beer garden, I believe you must have limited access.
Well, they're not selling it outside.
Right.
It's like their smoking area.
Right. I understand that. You know, I just, it's something we might want to look into, because what that means is that if you wanted to give a minor a drink, you buy a drink, and you go outside and give it to a minor. And that's, you know, that, now these might not be quite a beer garden.
No, they're not, yeah.
But it's something we, I think we need to look into.
I think this kind of covers where they got, they don't have it, but the other ones all got horseshoe pits and stuff like that outside. They still, you know...
Something we look at in audits.
Yeah.
I mean, we can look at it that way, too, because these licenses are every year looked for, you know.
Right, yeah.
Could do that if requested.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve of that?
I'll take a motion to extend the liquor license to the, for the corner bar into the back parking lot.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to extend the liquor license for the corner bar into the back parking lot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider trick-or-treat hours. What have we got scheduled?
It's coming up.
Halloween's on a Monday, right?
Yeah.
And we traditionally do a, the Sunday afternoon, correct?
Sunday is what it's usually been the last couple of years.
We had, but what did we do? So last year, we went Saturday.
Yeah.
Halloween was on Saturday.
Yeah.
People...
And we had...
The year before, the year before, when it was Friday, Halloween, we still had Sunday, and there was some discussion.
Discussion.
Keeping it on Halloween, because it was Saturday, well, now it skips over to Monday, so. Usually, we set those hours in August or September. It's up to you guys if you want to look at, just going back to Sunday, because it's the 30th, otherwise, the 31st is Monday.
Packer game's at noon.
On Sunday?
Yeah. Well, Packer game's Sunday afternoon, yeah.
Do we do it like four to seven, or?
Four to six.
Three to five, four to six, somewhere in there. You said it's noon game.
It's a noon game, so.
So we could do a four to six.
They'll be over by then, that's...
Yeah, three o'clock even.
Do it on Sunday?
That you would schedule around football, to me, is not...
I schedule everything around football.
I know, but how many dads are going to take kids trick-or-treat when the Packers are playing? That's be quite an argument some places. I agree with you.
Well, and some people did like it that it was a little later, because they wanted, some kids wanted it kind of dark.
Yep, yeah.
Sunday?
Three to five.
Yeah.
Well, that okay?
Four to six. The game's going to end at three.
Yeah. Someone want to make a motion on Sunday, four to six?
October 30th, dark by 4:30. It will be.
I'm okay with either one, because I can think of a million things I'd rather do on a Sunday, sit in front of a TV.
Well, you ain't going to go trick-or-treating anyway.
I'll make a motion...
You don't know that. How about that, Tom?
Make the hours on Sunday, October 30th, from three to five.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, make it. October 30th, trick-or-treat, three to five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, big one, take care of there.
Be overtime.
Can we consider these appointments, all three? Patrick?
Yeah, so it's up to you guys. This is, after we had created the ethics ordinance, we have been left with an ethics board, and we do know we have not had appointments to this board. Typically, the way the ordinance goes is if there's a vacancy for more than 60 days, the city council can suggest names, and then it's up to the city council to vote on whether they would like to have those names, and the mayor's review then would be through either like veto. But we defer to Council President Gunnison.
We, we're required to have this board by law, and we have been outside the law for well over a year now, and we need, we need, this is one of those boards that we need filled before, hopefully, nothing ever goes wrong, right? But we need it filled before something does go wrong. So I have, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Cynthia Garnett, Dan McCurdy, and Patrick Martin to the ethics board.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, appoint these three, that McCurdy, Patrick Martin, Cynthia Garnett to the ethics board. I totally agree, those are some very good names you got on there. Totally agree with that. Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What's our video?
The video, which we are equipped to turn on and watch, about 15 minutes, this is the video Shaney may remember and Nick may remember, but our, this is from our insurance company at the end of 2013, because of, prior to everyone sitting here, I believe, the loss ratio for the city was so poor that we were actually non-renewed, where our insurance company had dropped the city. Now, we did get a credit of $800 as long as we show this video, and basically, it's a video that will lay out hypothetical situations that city council members will come into, peer pressure on projects, working with staff, working with campaigning versus governing, and that type of thing. So the 15-minute video, our insurance company is essentially going to mandate that we watch it. Again, we did get $800, we got paid $800 essentially to watch it. The question I have, though, is there are two members missing, so it would be nice that everyone is here to watch it, but if it turns into where somebody is missing every month for the next few months, there may not ever be a good, I'm not suggesting that, but it's up to you guys. I mean, we really don't have anything, there's no possession. We can turn it on fairly quickly and watch it here.
I think it's important that everybody be here for this.
I'm okay with that. Okay. So we can, we can hold it to another date, that's another problem. No problem.
All in favor of that? Hold it until we got a full council?
Essentially, they all have to watch it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That's no problem.
And the next thing, the mayor's report. I really got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Number one, driving around town here, I see several things that kind of upset me, that we should lean on or get heavier on or enforce. There's a lot of things, homes, areas, lots, that look very trashy in town. And a lot of it is just carelessness, people don't care. Another thing, some of it, I believe, is some of our fault. Look at Rob Peterson Park, the weeds and the... Look at, around Peterson Park, the weeds and the shrubs, it, it's placed the shoreline along the lake, looks terrible. It shows we got very little respect for what's going on around here. I think either ordinance, or public property, or whoever wants to take it up should really buckle down and get our Public Works people out, clean up a lot of stuff. We got weeds growing all over, brush hanging over intersections you can't see through. The end of Mill Street, there's weeds at eye, I believe that's our responsibility. Like I say, Peterson Park around the lake, and there's so many homes that have junk cars, campers, and so forth, sitting in the yard. We got to start sending letters out and enforcing them. Another thing, that's just cold, but another thing I got is the Wapaka County Public Economic Development, I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but the county's got a lot of money in a pile that they'll give out to any local business that shows promise. I got a list here that you guys can look at, it's public knowledge, it's nothing secret, that those are businesses that borrowed anywhere from ten thousand up to a hundred thousand dollars to improve or expand a business, and a lot of it is determined by the number of help they hire. They can graduate the, the amount of money they get up if they hire more people, and it's a good program. And I guess what I'm saying is, anybody on this council, you find somebody that's interested in starting a business, opening a business, or expand a present business, and they could use a little financial help, it's there. All you got to do is apply for it. If you got a, a, a good track record and a, a valid idea, they're more than willing to help you out with it, so. Take a look at that, ew, you recognize names on there, and some of them are pretty good. Come on, I know, there's one on there that was, was a farm, the business goes all, I felt bad, I knew the guy, his barn burned down, and then he had a real bad stroke, so I just, that was the end of it, but... Other than that, I've got nothing else. Administrator, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, uh, just a quick comment, I appreciate all the action and everything tonight, it seems like it went a little bit quicker, uh, but a lot of it was pretty important stuff. Uh, the budget amendment, which you had approved, will help us to finalize the two thousand and fifteen financials, so we do intend to have Mike Lenzmeyer from the auditors show up at the finance committee in September. Um, just a quick comment to piggyback on, on what you're saying, uh, we have had Public Works in at the boat landings to clear out brush and spray, and one thing I would ask, um, you guys maybe as you're, as you're looking around, the areas that the mayor had mentioned, is take a look at the boat landing by the painted sinal, because what we did there was cut, clear brush, and then spray, and with the spray, it's, it's an aquatic friendly spray, but what it's supposed to do, though, is keep weeds down for two years. So if we can spray it, let it turn brown, trim it, it should be good this year, it should be good next year, and then the next year, it will probably look like it looks between the bridge and the other area on the east side, you know, on that rock there. So now, depending on how this turns out, which we're thinking it should turn out pretty good, we will then flip over on Peterson Park on the other side. One of the issues we've had, and I think we've talked about it here at a couple committees, is, is not knowing exactly what the DNR will let us do, and not us do there, because we had done some cutting, three years ago, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, we had done some cutting and got near full, uh, Peterson property, they had done some clearing, and you never heard word about it, and, and I'm, I'm okay that way, because I think it looks a certain way. Uh, but definitely, uh, we are taking a look at that, we are taking a look at, uh, trees, things like that that are hanging low, we have had some complaints that we're going to follow up on. Um, and then to add, uh, the mayor had mentioned about the WC EDC, uh, the last two years I've actually been the president of that board, what he's talking about is the revolving loan fund, which I'm the chair of that committee. Uh, we've had half a million dollars in funds waiting to be loaned out to local businesses, what we're running into as a problem, and Dave Teal and his monthly reports that he sends out, you'll see this mentioned once in a while. The problem is, is that they're starting to federalize these loans, which means you have to create jobs. You can get up to thirty-five thousand dollars per job, but the paperwork, now if you're going to get some equipment and put it in, pretty straightforward, if you're going to swing any type of hammer, or have any type of labor intensive work, um, trying to think of politically the correct way to say it, but it's, it's almost to the point where the paperwork is such, such that it would bury you to try to get the money. So we are trying to get people, um, there's a couple, um, younger gentlemen in Wapaka that have started up their own businesses, I think one of them had worked for the County Highway, is a welder. And, uh...
Matt Glumel.
Yes, so he had, had gotten a loan to give a business going. Um, like I said, there's, there's like half a million dollars there, that's there to be loaned out, and definitely, as the mayor mentions, if you know anybody that's interested, who they want to add on with their business, um, it's low interest, slower than banks can provide most of the time, so. Well, this is an app, uh, construction continues, I believe in one of the committees, we had looked at the back wall, that was a test wall that was completed for the flashing issue that we had. What they did was, rather than sand everything down, they came and they put texture over the paint and then repainted it, so now it looks like that's okay. So what they want to do, they'll continue, on this wall, you can start to see, maybe every four feet up, you can see some, some smearing. Um, they are going to come back and finish that, and it looks like immo is bringing a crew to camp out here for about three days this week, to try to finish all these items. Doors don't shut all the way. The heat has been an ongoing issue, we thought we had the heating and air conditioning complete last week. Trina and I came in this morning, and our offices were ninety, and then an hour later, oh my Becky, it was like sixty, and it was the cooling, so. Uh, we are working on that, um, hopefully we can get to the end here. Hopefully this week it should be pretty good, like I said, immo wants to come in and camp out for about three days, so hopefully not a problem, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Such other matters authorized by law, I don't know that we have anything else up. Set the meeting agenda?
I, I will just make one quick comment, but we did get word this morning, uh, from the circuit court on railroad issue.
Yeah.
That the railroad had asked for the issue to be dismissed, which is what they did in Porch County and Wood County, and those counties found for the railroad, so the issue pretty much died there. Um, Judge Clusman in our county ruled to not dismiss the case, and went even further to explain that she, essentially from reading it, you read that she intends to maybe find them guilty if we go through a trial. What that means, like I said, we just found that out today, so her explanation is riveting to say the least, I mean, basically takes the arguments that have been at play, and she essentially thinks that we are uniquely situated, and that we should be able to preserve our policing powers to ensure health and safety and wellness and things like that when the trains are stopped, so that's very, very, very interesting. Um, strategy and things like that will definitely be in a future close session. That's all I have.
Okay. Becky, was that a calendar?
Uh, okay, right now we've got Public Works and Finance set for Monday, September twelfth. Public Works at six thirty, Finance seven thirty, or immediately following. Rack and Police, did you guys set for?
On thirteenth.
The thirteenth?
Yep. Rack first, then Police.
Okay.
Starting at six thirty.
City Council will be September nineteenth. And that's all I've got.
Orphans, we'd like to schedule for, um, Monday, September twelfth at three P.M.
All set? Motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.